I think Commissioner Edwards just joined us. Is that you, Commissioner Edwards?
Can you hear? Can you hear me?
Yeah, give us a minute to change his name, just for the public to understand who.
Thank you.
Oh, is that rename?
Change his name to Protect the Innocent.
Yeah, there you go.
Hold on.
We're going, Megan?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
We're gonna begin. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners session. It is Thursday, October 29th, 2020, and the topic today is docket item CP-11, Recycled Asphalt Policy Review. If you'd like to join in via conference call, the phone number is 360-252-9020, and your PIN is 1234. I am John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. Also present is Vice Chair, Commissioner Ty Mensah. On the phone is Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have in the boardroom Romero Chavez, our County Manager, and I believe Amy Davis, our Clerk of the Board. We have CPED Director Josh Cummings, that's Community Planning and Economic Development. And we also have our Community Planning Manager Jennifer Davis and our Senior Planner Maya Tippel attending. So with that, I'm going to turn to, and this is scheduled for an hour. So Romero, do you want to begin or turn it to Josh?
Yeah, I believe this this item is related to the docket item number CP-11, and that is part of the 2020-2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket, which the Board approved early this year. This process, this item has been going through the Planning Commission already. They have provided some recommendations. The staff is going to walk you through in detail what the recommendations are. And at the end, we'll engage the Board on a conversation as to the next steps.
Perfect. So Joshua Cummings, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. Right on, in terms of the topic for discussion today, I just want to point out again that no easy topics come to CPED group or we bring them to you, the Board of County Commissioners. So again, this is our success in terms of the facilitation of the process and the opportunity to have that discussion that the County Manager relayed. So this is the Maya and Jennifer show, and I just wanted to say thanks again to them and their hard work in moving this difficult process, topic through the process.
And before you begin, I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Petrich, the County Deputy Prosecuting Attorney has joined us. So go ahead.
And also Travis Burns just joined us as well, Commissioner.
Good, safety.
Well, this is Maya's show today. She's the expert, as you can tell by previous briefings, and I'm sure this one as well. So I'm gonna turn it right over to her, and I'm here to just help track issues and provide support where necessary.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. I'm gonna share my PowerPoint. And is that visible now to everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. So thank you, Jennifer, Romero, and Commissioners. Maya Tippel with Community Planning, Senior Planner. I'm here to bring to you today the docket item CP-11, which is our Recycled Asphalt Policy Amendment. So you'll hear me say "RAP" a lot in this presentation. That stands for Recycled Asphalt Processing. It's it's just easier to stay "RAP", so I will use that abbreviation quite frequently in this presentation. I'm also going to ask that the Commissioners hold questions until the end of the presentation, so we can get through it this time. So write things down, and we can go back to slides if need be, and we'll we'll cover questions. We'll have some time at the end of the brief for questions. So jumping right in, the goal of today's briefing is to provide to the Board an overview of the proposed amendment, to go over the Planning Commission recommendation, and also the next steps on the proposed amendment. So on Slide 2, you'll see that there is a picture to the right side. This is what the RAP process is. We have asphalt that goes on a road, and then that asphalt deteriorates over time. So those roads need to be repaved occasionally. That asphalt on the road is milled off, and large chunks get taken off and then stockpiled on a site. And then that stockpile is then broken down into smaller pieces of asphalt and then reused, combined with virgin asphalt to recreate a mixture that goes on the road again. It's a very recyclable material. Almost all of it can be recycled. So that that is the process that we're talking about today, is the reuse of asphalt and the recycling of it. So what is the request that we're talking about? This is a citizen-initiated request. So in 2016, Lakeside Industries applied for a comprehensive plan amendment. Specifically, their request was to change policy E5 of the Nisqually Subarea Plan, which currently prohibits RAP. The policy amendment would apply to the whole Nisqually Subarea. So a bit of history, this was first docketed back in 2017, and it has been on the official docket since then as item number 11. We also have another docket item, the Nisqually Subarea Plan, that is currently on the docket. The Lakeside Initiated Proposal was ranked 3 out of 6 of citizen-initiated amendments. And then the Squali proposal was ranked 6 out of 6 of Board-initiated amendments. So this policy is moving ahead a little bit more quickly. They have been separated as two different docket items. That decision was made back in 2017 when they were both originally docketed. So that's the reason this is being reviewed differently and separately from the wholesale overview of the Nisqually Subarea Plan. So I do want to go over what this request doesn't do. So today, we're talking about a policy amendment to a single policy in the subarea plan. That policy amendment would affect the entire subarea. It's not a review of an individual permit application. So we're not approving anyone to recycle asphalt on their site. We're just reviewing a policy that would allow for those folks who are interested to apply for a permit. So even if the policy was changed, anyone who wants to recycle asphalt in that area would still need to come into the county and apply for a permit and go through that entire process and meet all of the critical areas regulations, the zoning regulations, Clean Air Act, all of that. So we're we're talking about the policy level, but there is another stage, which is the permit level, and that is not what we're making any sort of decision on, just the policy. So policy E5, this slide shows the request of the applicant and current language of policy E5 in the Nisqually Subarea Plan. So the policy currently says, "Allow accessory activities to be considered inside the mined-out portion of the gravel pit through the site plan review process. Examples of allowable accessory uses would include concrete pipe and/or septic tank construction and recycling of used concrete. The reprocessing of imported mineral materials shall not be the primary accessory use, and the reprocessing of asphalt shall not be allowed due to water quality concerns. These activities shall be discontinued once reclamation of a pit is completed in accordance with Washington DNR standards." The lighter blue text on this slide shows the applicant's request. So they are requesting that asphalt recycling be added in as an accessory use that is allowable and that it's no longer prohibited. This policy was first included when the Nisqually Subarea Plan was originally adopted in 1992. There was a lot of stakeholder work that went behind that, and some of the concerns that are cited in the archived materials are concerns over harmful chemicals that could be leached into the environment, and also that asphalt reprocessing might contribute substrate fines to the water and then impact water quality. I do want to note that there were not scientific sources present in the archived materials. That doesn't mean that they weren't considered. It just means that they're not readily available to what staff can look at. So so a short answer to that is, we don't know what scientific sources were considered in the original adoption of this policy. So this review has been going on for a couple of years now, and it's been broken down into two phases. Phase 1 was a consultant review, and then phase 2 was county staff review. So the consultant review was broken up into two pieces. Thurston County issued an RFP to select a consultant, and that consultant conducted a review of existing literature out there on leachate of recycled asphalt. Initially, the consultant developed an inventory of all of the literature that was out there, and then that inventory was narrowed down to the top-rated studies. And from those top-rated studies, the consultant wrote and issued paper on what what the potential impacts were from leachate of recycled asphalt. The second phase, which which kind of kicked off in 2019, when the consultant work ended, was that county staff did some further review on current county regulations, existing policies, permitting processes, previous court rulings, high-level overview of conditions in the Nisqually Subarea, and looking at a high-level overview of potential best management practices. So next slide is a map of the Nisqually Subarea. So policy E5 applies to the Nisqually Subarea, and this amendment would only apply to that area as well. So asphalt recycling is actually currently allowed in the rest of Thurston County on a case-by-case basis. It's subject to the current code requirements, like zoning in critical areas. So there might be some sites that it's not allowed at because of code requirements, but there's no broad-level prohibition in the rest of Thurston County, only in the Nisqually Subarea, which you see in this map here. A little bit about this area, it's about 9,000 acres in size, and it's located in northeastern Thurston County. It contains a couple of notable areas, like the Billy Frank Jr. National Wildlife Refuge, portions of the Nisqually Indian Tribe, portions of Joint Base Lewis McCord, and also the McAllister Geological Sensitive Area. There's also some long-term agriculture and Nisqually agricultural lands. On the right side of this slide, you can see the green areas are the agricultural lands. There's a large area on the western portion, and then again on the eastern boundary of the subarea. And there are also two current mines in the subarea. So there is the Holroyd-Milson Mine, which is directly in the middle of the subarea. And then on the bottom portion, there's the Giliardi Mine that is, both are active. So as I mentioned, there's still a permitting process. Even if this policy were to be changed, folks would still need to come into the county and get a permit. So I do want to go over some of what's required for folks who want to apply to recycle asphalt. Some of the most relevant sections in the county code that apply are the State Environmental Policy Act. So folks need to go through the SEPA process when they apply for a permit, and that's a project-specific SEPA process. Also, the Mineral Extraction Code, that covers best management practices for mines and also for asphalt plants. The zoning code, which specifically 2054 regulates special uses. Asphalt recycling would always require a special use permit in Thurston County. It's not outright permitted. And additionally, the Critical Areas Code under Title 24 would apply. So there are critical areas regulations that could impact on which sites this can occur. Beyond county regulations, there's also a number of state and federal regulations that these these operators also need to go through in order to get a permit. One example is a stormwater general permit, and that is issued by the Department of Ecology. That permit limits the amount of pollution that, from stormwater, that enters into lakes, rivers, and marine waters. So Ecology issues that permit, and they are also the responsible agency for monitoring and making sure that the stormwater that enters surface waters or groundwater does not exceed state state regulations. So as is mentioned in the policy, water quality considerations is one of the main concerns. In fact, the current prohibition in the policy language says, "Based on water quality concerns", and this has been cited over and over again from citizens who have commented. So when industrial facilities are exposed to stormwater, they can leach pollution. Typically, metals and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which I will refer to as PAHs in the rest of the presentation, are the two big concerns of types of chemicals that can come out of industrial facilities. I do want to note that it's it's not just asphalt recycling, so this could occur with any type of industrial facility, but today, we are just talking about asphalt recycling. And then leachate is the precipitation that hits that material, that solid material, collects the pollutants, and then enters into the groundwater or becomes stormwater, enters into the surface water. So there are a number of different factors that can affect how much those industrial activities have an impact to water quality. Some of what can impact that is the location of those facilities, the topography, how stormwater collects and enters nearby waters. Also, the hydrogeology of the site can impact how stormwater moves through the ground, how it binds to soils. Impervious surfaces and ground cover can affect how quickly that runoff enters into the ground. The activities and sizes of operations can impact what type of pollutants we see. And also, best management practices can affect how quickly those pollutants enter the ground, or if they enter the ground at all. So there are stormwater management practices that can be implemented at the site level that can impact if and how that leachate enters into the ground or groundwater. So going over the consultant report, Thurston County contracted with a consultant to conduct a literature review, and that literature review looked at research on contaminant leaching from RAP. What kinds of contaminants do we see, and how often do they exceed groundwater standards for Washington State? It did not look at things like source control, best management practices for stormwater management, how those chemicals bind to the soils when they enter the ground, or specific conditions of the Nisqually Subarea. So all of these things could potentially impact how pollution makes it to the ground and enters into the groundwater. The consultant first identified literature, and there were 101 reports that were identified originally. That was then narrowed down to the highest top-rated studies, and there were eight studies that the consultant reviewed. Those studies were narrowed down based on age, so older studies typically have less rigorous lab techniques and equipment. So newer studies were selected mostly. If they were first-party or original work, if they looked at materials that were 100% RAP and not mixed with other things like concrete, and that they were peer-reviewed. And most of these studies that the consultant reviewed were laboratory testing. So they looked at two types of tests, batch tests and column tests. Batch tests are when you take a piece of asphalt, you put it in a beaker, and then that beaker is filled with water, and then that water is measured after a certain period of time. And then column testing is when you have a piece of asphalt, and you slowly drip the water over that piece of asphalt, and you measure the water that runs off of it. So those were the two primary types of lab testing that was looked at. There was one field study that was looked at, and I'll talk a little bit about that when I go over the summary of that report. So this is the Cliff Notes version of what the consultant found after reviewing that literature. So only broad summaries could be made from the research that was reviewed. RAP is highly variable, so the types of pollutants that we see depends on the manufacturing process of the RAP. It depends on where the RAP comes from. Is it from a road? Is it from a parking lot? Is it from a gas station? How long it was used? What is the material size? How it was stored? And how weathering can impact the types of pollutants that we see leached off of it. Metals were rarely leached above groundwater standards from Washington, but PAHs were more often leached above groundwater standards. And one characteristic that was found across all of the studies for PAHs was that there was a distinct initial flush. So initially, when the water first hits the asphalt, there's a spike that exceeds the groundwater limit, and then it rapidly goes below the groundwater limit and below detection levels. So if you think of a bell curve, you see this spike initially, and then it quickly goes down below the groundwater standards. So it's within the limits. A number of the reports suggested that the impact to the environment would be negligible if dilution and assimilation and best management practices were considered. So if if the study's considered how it binded to soils, then the impact to the environment would essentially be negligible. And then there was one field study that indicated that lab studies might not be representative of real-life conditions. So going over some of the public comment we've received to date, this is a little bit outdated because I've gotten a few more comments from folks over the past week. But so far, we've received 92 written comments and 35 oral comments. Most of these comments are against the proposed amendment, about 64 of them, and then 37 are in favor of the proposed amendment. Some of the considerations listed and the major themes for those comments that were against the proposed amendment, there are some citizens that are concerned over a proposal for the Holroyd Mine, which is a separate project. It's not being considered with this proposal, but it but it's in the vicinity. There are concerns with impact to real character, concerns about water quality, flooding and groundwater, concerns about truck traffic, air quality, noise, habitat, and impacts to salmon, concerns about impacts to drinking water, and also a preference that this should be reviewed holistically when the whole Nisqually Subarea Plan is updated. There are also some positive themes that I want to talk about. So some of the things we've seen from the comments in favor of this proposed amendment is that recycling is responsible. It can allow for more bids, because some bids require a certain percentage of RAP to be used. It can reduce the cost to people who need to put those bids in. It uses less raw materials. It's sustainable. Asphalt is nearly 100% recyclable, and it's consistent with other county plans that encourage recycling. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 7th, and after that public hearing, they did produce a recommendation. So they produced a recommendation of approval of the amendment by unanimous vote, 9 to 0, with no Commissioners absent, as written in option 3, and no changes proposed to that option. So I'm gonna go over the three options and what the Planning Commission recommendation was specifically. So the three options that were proposed and that the Planning Commission considered, option 1 was no change to the policy, so that continues to prohibit RAP in the Nisqually Subarea. Option 2 was the applicant's proposed amendment. This would remove the prohibition on asphalt recycling in the Nisqually Subarea. It's just a change to policy E5. And then option 3, which was the Planning Commission's recommendation, is the applicant's proposed amendment, so it removes that prohibition on asphalt recycling. But there are some additional amendments that would require best management practices for the storage of RAP in the Nisqually Subarea. So option 3 also pairs with a code change to 2054 in the county code that would spell out that requirement for coverage of RAP. This is the language of policy E5 for option 1. There's no change. So you'll see midway through this wild text, "The reprocessing of imported mineral materials shall not be the primary accessory use, and the reprocessing of asphalt shall not be allowed due to water quality concerns." This maintains that prohibition of recycled asphalt in the subarea. Option 2 is the applicant's request. This option strikes the language that prohibits and would add asphalt recycling as a allowable accessory use in the subarea. And then option 3 is the Planning Commission recommendation. So this option includes the applicant's request, which would allow for recycled asphalt in the subarea, but it also includes more information in the policy language and also in the code that would require best management practices be applied at the site level to cover RAP stockpiles. So the specific type of practice that would be applied is left to the permit process. It could include storage sheds, tarping, or other methods. But this this option would require some sort of covering in of RAP stockpiles in the Nisqually Subarea. And as I mentioned, option 3, which is the Planning Commission recommendation, does include a code change. So there would be an added code requirement in 2054 under the Asphalt Production Special Use Permit section. And this is just to require the best management practices be applied for covering and storage of RAP. So next steps on this amendment, there are two options that staff are seeking direction on from the Board. What more information would you like prior to setting a public hearing? And the two options that I have for the Board laid out today, option 1, in order to take an action this year, staff would need to request the public hearing next week, 11:03. I requested that hearing be set for December 1st. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, so it does fall into that once-a-year adoption. We're planning that once-a-year adoption for December 15th. So the public hearing would need to occur before then in order to take a final action. The second option is that the Board can request any sort of additional information, options, briefings, anything else they would like information on that could delay this request until 2021. So now, I'm happy to open it up. We have plenty of time for questions, and happy to open it up.
Maya, I hope you're right that we have plenty of time.
We do. We have, we have 30 minutes, so.
Yeah, even if I count 35 minutes, that's about 10 minutes per Commissioner, and I've got several. But I'm gonna start with my seatmates. So I'll start with Commissioner Mensah. Are you ready to go? Are you ready to go?
I'm, I have three pages of questions and I I'd sort of like to go last maybe because otherwise I'm gonna feel like I'm I'm hinging in on your guys' time and I it's possible that I have more questions than you guys. I certainly have more questions than I have on any other recent topic, so if I could defer, I would like to. Since I won the coin flip, I'm gonna choose to defer to the second half.
Okay, all right. Uh Commissioner Edwards, go ahead, sir. You got just a few minutes to move, so we can just squeeze everybody in.
Okay, can Ma- can Maya hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, uh when you first got started, you mentioned that this has been uh an application in twenty sixteen, but it seems like my understanding was this has been going on uh this process anyway has been going on for considerably longer than that. Uh, and what's the real answer on that?
Yes, you're very right in saying that. So Lakeside Industries applied for a comprehensive plan amendment several times before two thousand and sixteen. And uh every time they applied for that, the board did not choose to add it to the docket. So they have applied, I think, four or five more times. Um, it was just never added to the docket because there were not staff resources to complete the item. So twenty sixteen uh was the first time we saw that application get added to the docket in two thousand seventeen.
But but prior to that, I mean, wasn't it like in two thousand and ten or something? But maybe even before that, it seems like I remember this being an issue in front of the board. Am I right about that?
Right, and yes, it was an issue, but it was never added to the docket. So they had applied to have this policy changed and the board previously never added it to the docket. So staff never worked on this as a project item.
Okay, so the board in uh in twenty sixteen then made it officially part of the comp plan uh docket issue, right?
Yes, that's correct.
That it? Okay, then uh uh you referred several times to the consultant report. Who paid for that consultant report?
Yes, so the county contracted with the consultant and the county selected the consultant. Lakeside has been paying for this amendment and the consultant is included in what Lakeside has paid for.
Okay, so they've done, they've kind of paid for this process to move along, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct. And at the beginning, when this was added to the docket, staff determined that this was a uh going to be mo- more onerous than a typical comprehensive plan amendment. And so a funding agreement was developed between the county and Lakeside that Lakeside would pay for uh the the process and the additional, since ten thousand dollars, our typical comp plan amendment fee wouldn't have covered this.
And then if we move this to move forward as per the Planning Commission's recommendation, uh that next step then puts it basically in front of the public to have their input at that time. Is that right?
That's correct. The next step would be a public hearing and the board could choose to either send all of the options or just the Planning Commission option forward to public hearing. I'm sure you'll hear uh comments on a variety of options, whether they all go or not, so.
Oh, okay, that'll suffice for Mia. I know Commissioner Mensah's got a lot of questions and I'll listen to his, maybe he'll uh spark another question from myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll I'll plow you through a few of them. They may answer some of uh both of your questions.
Um, okay.
Setting for a public hearing uh per slide four does not equal a permit. That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, and uh the Planning Commission's recommendation differs only from the application in that it requires a covering of the product?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and this has been reviewed sixteen years. How, of all the comments you received, has our Nisqually tribal partners uh dissented? Or uh they have any uh concerns or have they weighed in on this?
Yes, so the Nisqually River Council did submit comments. We didn't get a formal comment from the uh Nisqually Indian Tribe, but uh Mr. David Trout sits on the River Council. So he he did submit a comment letter. Um, one of their big concerns was that this should be reviewed holistically with the whole sub area plan. And um I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. Uh, they said that if this was to proceed now, that they would uh only be supportive of option three of the three options. Um, however, they feel that more research is needed, site level studies is needed and that they would like to see it reviewed at the same time as the Nisqually Sub Area Plan. I saw Jennifer pull her screen up. Jennifer, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to say that through the Planning Commission's review process, um David Trout, as well as representatives from Lakeside, both were invited and and were guest speakers to the Planning Commission and had some good discussion around this. And I think um uh that Planning Commission recommended option three. That was informed by that discussion that they had.
So what I heard, the bottom line was Nisqually is uh their their preference is option three, setting for a public hearing?
I think their preference right now would be to see it reviewed holistically with the whole sub area plan. But if this, if the board was to take an action to change the policy and allow for asphalt recycling, they would be more in favor of option three than option two.
Okay, uh and you you said, Maya, that almost all uh asphalt can be recycled. What is almost all and what what do you do with, what do we do with the rest of it?
Yeah, so I think it's something like ninety-nine percent of asphalt that comes off the roads can be recycled. Uh, there may be certain cases where there's uh a hazardous site or a gas station where there there's a different limitation on how that is recycled. But uh when it's recycled, it gets milled up and it gets reprocessed. It gets combined with new virgin asphalt and then reused for parking lots, roadways. When it's not recycled, uh which which does happen, it gets sent to a landfill uh with construction and demolition waste. And construction and demolition waste actually makes up a significant portion of the landfills that we see in Washington. So it it goes to a landfill and that that's how it's disposed of. Or it gets, it gets shipped to another uh recycling facility. So that's what we see a lot of happening if if folks have asphalt that's ready to get recycled. If if we weren't allowing it here, it would just get sent somewhere else to a different facility that does allow it.
Okay, and um can recycled asphalt be recycled? Can you just keep going through that replication?
Yes.
That's okay. And uh how many others in the county, uh you mentioned Holroyd, could reasonably apply for a permit?
That's a great question. I will pull up this screen, uh if my my screen is still being shared, I think. But currently
This is at, this is at the request of uh Lakeside, but it opens up county wide.
Well, the county already allows for asphalt recycling. So it it, yeah, it's just in the sub area that we would be removing that prohibition. And uh realistically, Lakeside is uh the facility, they're the only asphalt plant in that area. So they could apply for it. Uh Giliardi is the other current mine in that area and they actually already handle rap. So the slide that I have pulled up right now, uh these red squares show facilities in Thurston County that actively handle recycled asphalt. And then the green stars are the asphalt plants. So the county only has two asphalt plants. However, there are a number of facilities throughout the county that actively handle rap. One of those is already in the Nisqually Sub Area and that is because it was existing prior to the adoption of the sub area plan. So uh the Lakeside facility is really the facility that could apply. But that's not to say that in the future, we don't have another mine come into the sub area and apply to recycle asphalt. Uh, i- it's it's hard to predict, uh but it would open that up to the whole sub area.
Okay, thank you. I only have about, I think, three more questions. I'll bang them out quickly. And the first one, I can't even read my writings, so I'll mix it out, skip down. Came to best management practices and the consultant didn't review best management practice. That just means the best practice in that industry nationally?
Best management practices, uh i- i- it's the standard for how things are applied. It's not, it's not a single singular thing. So there are best management practices for storm waters related to asphalt plant. There's uh best management practices for covering. Uh, there's a lot of different types of best management practices that are applied to reduce the amount of pollution. Um, specifically, we're talking about covering being a single best management practice that we would require under the the Planning Commission recommended option.
Okay, thank you. And I I deciphered the word I might didn't write down clearly. On page eleven, your slide talks about rap is highly variable manufacturing process. And I think you said um rap material is better. Did you say that rap material is better? Or maybe that's my question, is rap material better once it's recycled?
I did not. I don't believe I said rap material is better. Um, highly variable, it depends on uh the the amount of pollution that comes on off of rap depends on the manufacturing process. So uh virgin asphalt also has the potential to leach pollutants. Recycled asphalt could potentially leach different types of pollutants based on its use. So you know, cars drive on asphalt, uh that that can impact the type of pollution that comes off of it. But it's it's variable, so it just depends what what its use was and what type of pollution and how much of it we see.
Okay, and my final question at this point, and I'll move to Ty if he's ready, is on slide twelve. Uh, one of the themes for the proposal was less use of raw materials. I'm taking that to mean if we're recycling old stuff and reusing it, then we are, we're pulling less natural resources aggregate out of the ground, correct?
Yeah, so that's correct. Um, when asphalt is recycled, there's there's two main components. There's the rock component and then there's the oil component, which essentially binds the rocks together. Uh, by recycling asphalt, you reduce the use of both of those a little bit. So uh you you still do need some virgin asphalt included in the equation, but uh it does reduce the amount that's needed.
Okay, and so setting it for a public hearing then doesn't equal a permit. Uh, Lakeside would still have to go through five regulatory uh reviews, local and state.
Yep, so uh if the board chooses to set a public hearing, we're just taking public testimony on this policy amendment. And after that, the board can make a decision on whether they want to amend the policy or uh or not. And if the board were to amend the policy, Lakeside still needs to come in and apply for a permit. Any operator in the Nisqually Sub Area that wants to recycle asphalt still needs to come in and apply for a permit. So we're not, we're not approving a permit with this. We would just be looking at amending the policy to give them the option to apply for the permit to recycle asphalt. So yes, there are still several steps after this policy is changed for them to take any sort of action in doing that use.
And I lied, I have one more question. When we were going through the um um Rocky Prairie issue, uh opponents were saying there's gonna be three thousand trucks up and down the road, there's gonna be this, there's gonna be that. And I see as one of the themes against the proposal was transportation impacts. Do we have any estimate of what that would look like?
Yeah, so so truck traffic uh would be something that's considered at the permit level because this is a policy amendment that would apply to the whole sub area, so we don't look at site specifics with a policy amendment. Um, however, that being said, I will note that uh the amount of asphalt that is produced off a site is limited in the special use permit. So even if they uh want to recycle asphalt, there's a cap on how much they can do, whether they're using virgin asphalt or recycled asphalt in that mixture. So in theory, that would uh increase the truck traffic coming off of it. It could potentially result in uh more if there are trucks bringing it in, uh like off a road or something. But that would all be evaluated at the permit level.
Okay, thank you. Now you're brilliant. All right, Commissioner Mensah, you're on.
Okay, thanks. Um, all right, so I'll jump around because I'm not sure I have time for all this stuff. But um when going to the water quality study that uh Herrera did, um you mentioned P A Hs and that's, I didn't quite catch what that is. It says organic compound. I guess my question is, what is that? How concerning is it? And is there some reason why that's a concern in the Nisqually Valley versus somewhere else? Does that have to do with, I keep hearing references to a shallow water table. What, can you kind of tie those, tie that that issue together for me?
Yeah, so P A Hs stands for Polycyclic Aromatic Hydrocarbons. And there is concern that when those enter the water system, they can affect wildlife. They can affect uh people when we drink them. Um, so so i- it it's a common pollutant that we see in industrial uses. It it typically comes from oil refining products, I think. Um, and and salmon and orcas have been one of the major concerns cited in the comments that we've seen. Uh, it can affect their reproductive ability. Um, so so that's kind of where that concern comes in. Does that answer your question or was there more to that than I'm missing?
Uh, so the concern is that, is that would the concern then be that this is close to the Nisqually? Like this would have a salmon impact that maybe it wouldn't have if it were some of the other red places on the map that you showed us. The fact that there's proximity to the river, is that the concern? I'm trying to, I guess what I'm, I have a, I have a series of questions trying to understand why this out of, if recycled asphalt as a policy is allowed in the entirety of Thurston County, why did a former board or or former set of stakeholders single out this one tiny area of the county to not have it? And that gives me concern about about why, you know, that there's some good reason why they they pick just this one little area to say we're not gonna allow it here. I don't know if it has to do with flooding of that area. And I don't know if that play, you know, that that was mentioned in the Nisqually River Council letter, the first letter, they said they wanted a uh evaluation of the hundred year flood plain zone. They didn't really spell that out, but I started to remember our our Nisqually flood in January. And and I can imagine if you have these, these chemicals concentrated in this material, even if it's covered, if the whole area floods, that seems like it could be damaging. And I really don't know anything about P A Hs. I never heard of it till today.
Mm-hmm, right. So I I can't speak to the historic of why the main concern was. Uh, presumably, based on the public comment we've received today, a lot of these folks were around during the original adoption of the plan. Um, proximity to the Nisqually River is one of the concerns that folks have cited in their public comment. Also, uh proximity to the water table. So uh again, this is a policy amendment. We're not looking at the specific site. However, the Lakeside facility uh and the Holroyd Mine are fairly close to the water table. And uh folks do comment on that, that as a being a concern. So all of that uh information, because that can vary widely across the sub area. So we have some areas in the sub area that are quite a bit uh further from the water table or they are further from the Nisqually River. Um, that information is looked at in detail when people come in for a permit. So the distance from the water table, the types of soils on site, how P A Hs might travel through those soils and bind to the soils, that's all evaluated at the permit level. That's not really in the scope of a policy amendment. Um, but just based on some of the comment that we received, the Nisqually River, proximity to the water table, it being a critical aquifer recharge area are some of the primary concerns that folks have noted.
So in the Nis, the net, the the October twenty, there's two, in case the public's tracking, there was two letters that were received from the Nisqually River Council. And the Squali River Council involves Pierce County, Lewis County, Thurston County, Cities of Yom, Eaton, Villroy, Tacoma Power, Fugitive Sound, pardon, I mean, a huge list of organizations. Um, Department of Agriculture, Transportation, I don't know, Commissioner Edwards is our representative. I've never been to a River Council meeting. But their letter from last year said, after they had read the Herrera study, they said there are significant, remain sign, there remain significant questions about impacts of rap on water quality in the Squali Valley that cannot be answered without further study. And they urged the board to require on the ground field studies of R A A P leachate behavior in Thurston County before moving forward. Sounds like from what you described, like that's, that that was never done or that was, that request wasn't addressed. It was basically something that would be done later at a permit level, you're saying?
Yeah, we we didn't do site level studies uh at existing rap facilities. That would be a pretty um extensive lift. But uh there are hydrogeological reports and um site specific studies that are required at the permit stage as well as an environmental review through a CIPA checklist when someone comes in for a permit to recycle asphalt. So you're correct, that was, we did not do site specific studies in Thurston County. So you're correct, that was, we did not do site specific studies in Thurston County. Uh, that was a request out in the Nisqually River Council that came in last year. And that was not something that we conducted.
Um, I don't think you answered my question about the flooding. Is the fact that this area floods a concern for this having a recycled asphalt facility there?
It could be. Again, I don't know the historic, uh, reasons off the top of my head without looking at that resolution, but that has been something that people have noted in public comment. Um, so, uh, that could be a possible concern. There are other areas of the county like the, um, southwestern portion along I five there that does also see flooding and recycled asphalt isn't allowable use in that area as well. So, uh, that has been cited as a concern in public comment that we've received in this round updating it.
In the, in the, the newest letter from the Nisqually River Council, they lay out, um, as you say, they say, if you're going to go forward to option three, the minimum, minimum B N Ps best management practice should require, and they list out six bullet points. It seems pretty, it seems a lot more specific than what's currently in, in the planning commission approved version of, of option three. So I guess I'm wondering, are these elements that the planning commission could go back and sort of re, like, be more specific about? Like, you know, uh, there, they talk a lot about adaptive management protocols. They want to be, the, the river council wants to be involved in the water quality monitoring. There's no, there's no delineation about water, about ongoing water quality monitoring and who would do that and what the, you know, what the, um, consequences would be. And then there's this, this kind of open ended one, or I guess vague to me, saying no open groundwater connections. I'm not sure what that means exactly. Do you, so I guess I'm asking you if you understand the six bullet points from the Nisqually River Council's recommendation and, and then whether or not they would be appropriate to be included, uh, you know, so that the community have more, um, confidence in what we're doing.
Right. So I will speak to some of that. I don't have the letter in front of me. Um, but, uh, part of those are addressed through the permit process. So, uh, at the policy level, requiring, um, someone to be involved with a certain permit, that's not something we would include in policy language. The policy language is general and applies to the whole sub area. But it could be included as a permit condition possibly when, uh, an operator comes in and applies for a permit. Also things like water quality monitoring and who is involved in that. So there are already requirements in the county code and at the state level about how water quality is monitored and how storm water is monitored. Uh, uh, as I mentioned previously, the permit of ecology requires a general permit and they do monitoring. I think it's quarterly. It might be by annually, but I can't recall off the top of my head. But ecology does the water quality monitoring of storm water on site. And I believe those reports are available to the public. So, um, those kind of concerns of Lakeside working together with the tribe, that's, that's not something we could address at the permit level or include in the county code. Uh, we, we wouldn't want to include specifics like that in the county code. However, uh, the first step is to change the policy in order for Lakeside to even be able to apply for a permit. And then when they come in for the permit, all of that would be, um, considered and added to the, the permit condition, you know, working with the public. There is a public input process for a special use permit, uh, for asphalt recycling. So that would be considered at that stage. Um, there were a couple other points you noticed, like groundwater connections. And I'm not sure if you have that in front of you, but if you have further questions, you can repeat that.
Uh, the, that suggestion said no open groundwater connections and assessment of the one hundred year floodplain zone as updated by FEMA in 2020 to protect the sensitive environmental and water supply resources in the vicinity.
Right.
I, I didn't, I didn't understand what that meant exactly when it said no open groundwater connections.
Yep. And, and so, uh, as I mentioned, this is a policy level amendment. It applies to the whole sub area. So there's a lot of different places where this could occur. Uh, the groundwater connection or distance from surface water, it varies depending on the site. Uh, the county already has in place critical area, uh, regulations. So all of that would apply at the permit stage. There are regulations on floodplains and where asphalt production can occur related to that. There's also regulations on, um, mining sites and how far they can be from the water table. So all of that information gets taken into consideration at the permit stage.
Okay. Um, did, did any public comment come in from City of Lacey?
Ooh, no, we didn't receive any public comment from the cities on this proposal.
Okay, um, so another area of, so there's kind of like layers of concern that I've heard. Again, and I fully recognize there's, for lots of good, strong arguments for this policy change, but I'm trying to focus in on what the areas of concern that I've heard. One of them requi, uh, relates to the vision for the sub area plan. You mentioned the sub area plan. I was going back through our docket items because when I read in the, when I read in the Nisqually River Council letter that they did not want to separate this proposal from the sub area plan review, which is also on our docket, that made a lot of sense to me. So I was going back into my binder that I kept from the docket process to try to figure out why wasn't that done. And sure enough, I found right in the sheet that you guys gave us. It said, under the Nisqually Sub Area Plan, it says, there's an opportunity to do the Lakeside RAP Comprehensive Plan Amendment concurrently. I don't remember discussing that and I think that might've been something I missed. Um, you know, and maybe it was just the commissioner's ratings just kind of put them on separate, different tracks. I don't know. But, um, I guess I'd like to hear your perspective on the value of that. I guess, you know, I, there's, you know, there, there aren't very many sub area plans in the county. And so I assume that there's a really good reason why we go to all the effort to do a specialized plan for these particular couple, three areas, because they have unique characteristics. And to do something that obviously has a lot of community interest and basically decided in advance of, like, I don't even, I haven't considered the Nisqually Sub Area Plan. I'm not sure what the vision is. I've had some agriculture groups approach me and say, we'd like to, we'd like, we'd like to expand the agriculture opportunities in Nisqually Sub Area Plan. If you're, if you're not listening, you know, if we don't get a chance to make that argument and you've already approved, you know, recycled asphalt, that's, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So I'm just, I guess I'm just wondering about the, the process that we're on here and whether it makes any sense to, to do these separately.
Uh, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Maya, but as I understand the history, um, it was a previous board decision to separate out the citizen application from Lakeside about recycled asphalt policy from the wholesale review and update of the Nisqually area plan. So those have been docketed separately per previous board direction and been following separate tracks. Um, and Maya addressed that earlier in terms of the prioritization. It remains the discretion of the board how you want to combine items on your docket and, uh, move them forward through a public process.
I'd interrupt you, but time is short. I, I remember there was a couple instances where you proposed that you said, hey, this one really makes sense to do with this one. We, we want you to consider them together and we did, and we followed that advice. So I just don't remember that discussion in this case. Anyway, that's kind of beside the point. Um, uh, I have some specific questions about the, currently there's a mine in this area and there's a permit involved in that. And I'm, my understanding is that when a mine gets permitted, um, Holroyd Mine or whatever we call it, the, um, there's like a reclamation plan that has to go along with the, the permit that they get. Is that true?
That's correct, yes.
I just want to jump in real quick. We have about four and a half minutes. I'm going to circle back to Gary as well. So go ahead, Maya. Go ahead, Maya.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there is a reclamation permit that's required act, uh, when someone applies for a mine and Holroyd does have one.
Okay, Gary?
Uh, no, I, I tell you what, I think that I'm satisfied with the information that I've heard to this point. Thanks.
Okay, good. Go ahead then, Ty.
Um, Gary, I want to ask you if you, um, you sit on the Nisqually River Council and I wondered if you had, if you had participated in the debate on their letter or you voted in favor of it or you were opposed to some elements of it? Or do you, or you support the October seventh letter from the Nisqually River Council?
Uh, no, just, just so, I guess you know and others that when it comes to any of the committees that I sit on, when they have correspondence, uh, either for or against in which the Board of County Commissioners is going to make a ruling, I usually abstain from the vote on that, as I did on this one.
Very good. Um, so has there, so, um, I know Maya, you said you don't totally understand, you know, what happened in ninety-two that led to this policy and you're not sure what science was relied on, et cetera. But assuming there was some reason for why they did it, it is, can we point to anything that's changed substantially? That, you know, um, has there been a, a sea change in something? Uh, you know, maybe there's been other development in the sub area that kind of changes the considerations? Or, I don't know, the, I think there's been an argument that the, that the market for recycled asphalt has changed, I guess, which is that maybe spurs the interest of Lakeside. Or do we have a shortage of this material in the region that changes the economic considerations? Like, what would be different? Uh, or do we know?
Changes in science, yeah.
Yeah, changes in science about best management practices, et cetera.
So I will say there have been a lot of technological improvements and how best management practices are applied and also regulations to require those types of things. Um, also the ecology general permit, the types of monitoring they do for groundwater and quality. There has also been, uh, one example at the county level is the implementation of the revised critical areas ordinance in two thousand and twelve. That has a lot of different regulations that would get applied to, uh, critical areas. And, um, I had a train of thought, but I, oh, uh, economics. Um, some changes in the types of economics that we've seen over the years. Uh, the county has, uh, recently had a lot of policies included in solid, solid waste management plans that encourage recycling the use of these types of materials because construction and demolition waste made up such a big portion of landfill waste. Uh, so, so there is new policies at both the state and the county level that encourage recycling. Um, as far as the differences in the risks of pollutants, I think that the, the risk has existed previously. It still exists. It's just the types of best management practices, how those get applied, uh, that's changed over time.
Real quick, then, I know I'm out of time, but, um, you mentioned in one of your other slides that phase two involved the county and you mentioned previous court rulings. Is there something, so what was the result? Is there anything about? I've heard about previous court rulings. I really don't know anything about them. Is there anything that we need to be concerned with or talk to Travis about or et cetera that relates to this issue?
Yep, I'm glad you bring that up. That's a good thing to cover here. So there was a court case previously between Lakeside and Thurston County that was regarding a permit issue. So it was not specifically on the policy language in the plan. Uh, that court decision, uh, doesn't preclude further amendment of the sub area plan. Uh, basically, uh, what, the history of that is Lakeside submitted for an application to recycle asphalt and produce asphalt. The hearing examiner approved the permit. It was appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. The board reversed that decision of the hearing examiner and denied the permit. And then that was appealed to the Superior Court of Mason County. They remanded it back to the board and said that Lakeside could have an asphalt plant, but they couldn't recycle asphalt because of this policy in the plan. So the bo, board preserves their broad legislative discretion to amend the policy if they wish to. If the board amends the policy, then it would essentially render the court prohibition on asphalt recycling as moot. But Lakeside would still have to apply for an amendment to their special use permit because the legislative action can't, uh, invalidate their current, current permit conditions. So there would still be a permit process. Um, but the short answer is it was, it was a court case on a permit condition, not on the policy.
So at this point, we are all in overtime. And, um, I see on the briefing paper, we have options one and two, but in this brilliant, uh, thorough PowerPoint has option three. So you need a thumbs up, uh, or direction thumbs up on one, two, or three? Is that it?
Um, I'm looking for a direction on if the board would like staff to bring this forward to request a public hearing on, uh, next Tuesday or if there are additional questions that they have before that action is taken. So let's stick to options one and two. I'm sorry about the three. Uh, the request is, do, does the board want staff to bring this forward to request the public hearing?
Okay. Uh, Gary?
Uh, yes, I think that I'm well, I am ready to, uh, go ahead with following the recommendation from the Planning Commission to allow public input to take place. And that would take place at a public hearing.
Okay. Uh, Ty?
Last year, the, um, CEPa staff came forward and gave us a range of options on community input. And, and I was outvoted. I asked for a full community stakeholder group to be formed and that didn't, uh, that didn't, didn't get anywhere. So the Squali River Council is kind of the de facto, um, group that I think serves that role. They kind of, they, they kind of make that case in their letter and I agree with them to a large extent. We don't have direct input from the Nisqually River Council. I mean, the, the Nisqually Tribal Council, but we have representation there in the River Council. Um, so given that, I agree with the, I agree with the, uh, pieces, I mean, I'd like to see, I want to see a win-win here and I want to see this, uh, get worked through. But it's a very difficult issue. Um, you know, Commissioner Edwards is always talking about, you know, being rushed and not having all the information we need. And I agree with him in this instance. I know this has been a long process for Lakeside, but, um, I agree with the recommendation for potentially some follow-up site level studies. And I definitely think this should be considered with our sub area plan. I'm sorry that we didn't link those together last spring, uh, and I, I take responsibility for that. But I, I think that that's a really compelling, um, point. So I'm not in a position to want to push this through to public hearing just yet. I want to talk to City of Lacey, uh, myself, because they have, their city borders go right up to this area. I mean, within blocks of what, where this would be happening. So they just got added to the Nisqually River Council, but I think it was literally a week after the October seventh letter. But, um, anyway, I'm, I'm not quite ready to do that. I know that we're against this timeline about comprehensive plan amendments. And I, and I'm sorry about that, but this is the first time this board has ever discussed this or, or talked about it at all. I knew about it. I've been tracking it, but a lot of new public comment came in. For example, this letter from October seventh that we haven't had a chance to discuss as a board or with staff. So my vote is to keep working on it, uh.
Okay. And I, uh, I think you go ahead and bring it forward to public hearing. We'll hear from the public, uh, we'll set it next week, uh, for a month away, December first. And, uh, that'll give, give staff more time to, to get more information from these other areas as well, these other entities, perhaps. Okay, you have what you need? I knew this would be enough time, Maya. So, all right, thank you all. Go ahead, Romero.
Just to confirm, uh, staff is going to be bringing an A I S to set the public hearing, um, on this, this coming Tuesday, November thirty, thousand and twenty. So that will be a new item on your agenda. And, uh, public hearing, if the board approves, will be set for early December. And this, uh, um, moving into setting a public hearing is, uh, the majority of the board, Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Hutchins, wanted to move this item to the public hearing. Commissioner Mensah, um, uh, wanted to, uh, have additional information. As a result, he wanted no to move this item to the public hearing.
Public hearing is on equal permit. All right, with that, we are concluding this meeting and we have to jump into another one that we're a few minutes late for. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Maya. Thank you, Jennifer.